Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and ask that you please rise to sort of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of announcements before we get going. First of all, our next meeting will be March 24th. It'll begin at 5:00 PM. We had several appointments that we were supposed to do tonight, but because of scheduling conflicts, we were not able to. And that's the night that we'll be making votes and recommendations on the articles for the warrant for town meeting. So we will start at 5:00 PM. The only thing I would ask the members of the Board of Selectmen is that we're not going to have people come up and do presentations. Historically, if you have questions after looking over the warrant, get with the town manager, basically do your homework ahead of time. And so we'll be prepared to take those votes. Secondly, just a reminder that the, on Saturday, April 5th, we'll be marking the town bounds, beginning, we can decide on a time, we'll begin at the Whitman line, and that's called under the statue perambulation of the town bounds, which perambulation, in case anybody's wondering, is the act of walking around a surveying land. So that's your lesson for today. Number four, we, just a reminder, town meeting is Monday, April 7th, at Abington High School, beginning at 7:00 PM. And then the town election, of course, is Saturday, April 26th. On the election, there would be two questions. The first question is relating to the Socio-Vocational Technical High School. As I've indicated before, it's no secret, I was a graduate of VOTEC, so I just want to disclose that. But secondly, as I had mentioned previously, that if people came down on the January 26th election and voted in favor of the new school, I reminded, would remind everybody that we are in need of you taking that second vote, which will be on the ballot at the annual town election. Because without that, we have to exclude that debt from the operations of the town. Other than that, we do not have the wherewithal to, you know, to absorb that within the confines of the town budget. So we would ask that you remember that. Lastly, the bids for the fire station DPW facility are going to be open on April 9th at 2:00 PM, and the project will then morph into the construction phase. So we're thankful for the committee to bringing it to the stage of getting the documents out. And this Wednesday, March 12th, at 3:00 PM, there's an auction for town-owned property, one, a house that was taken by tax title at 78 Linda Street, and property the town had taken by tax title at 862 Brockton Avenue. The auctioneer will conduct the auction on those two facilities. And as I had mentioned before, and you'll hear a little bit further on as we talk about the budget, we had looked at any available surplus property, any real estate that we've had, because next year is going to be very tight for us. So we're looking to liquidate as much as possible so that we can have a plan going forward for FY '27. With that said, is there any other announcements from members of the board? If not...
Reminder, we have a very fun parade coming up Sunday.
Yes, we'll be getting into that a little bit later on. We have with us, what I'm going to do is take out of order the police chief. We have introduction and swearing in of the newly graduated police officers who graduated the other day, February 28th, was it, at the Academy in Lynnfield, so Chief Barney.
Thank you all for having us in today. I have to say, I've heard a number of our officers in Abington PD tell me that this is about the most exciting time that has happened in their careers. We are in the midst of a hiring boom, trying to get us up to minimum staffing. And a couple of weeks ago, we had an orientation where 27 people were brought in that are, took our test. Sergeant Doherty, Officer White, Lieutenants Canada and Simmons held interviews of all 27 people, and they have whittled it down to 11. We're hoping, we're going to hire six out of that. The deputy chief and I, after backgrounds, will do more interviews before we make any type of conditional offers. And what's exciting about this is those six, by the time they get a conditional offer from us, go to the police academy and go through field training with what these three officers are doing now, the amount of members of our department that had a hand in hiring those is almost every single person on our department will have played a hand in hiring. It's just an exciting time, and the amount of work we're going to be able to get done. I know you see our numbers, I emailed them earlier today. Officer Schmidt just got off a stolen car that came through Abington, went into Whitman. It's been crazy busy. And we are very, very lucky that the police stork brought us three new officers here. We went to the academy graduation, we were honored by the chairman's presence with that. And we have here Officer Seamus Schmidt, Officer Fitz, and Officer Hullock. Officer Fitz was the academy's top scorer on the range, called Top Gun. All three performed very, very well in the academy, and we're just really proud of their efforts that they have made since they come out. What is special about these three to me is they started the academy the very same day I started here in Abington. So we have the same start date. And they came to my swearing in, and I asked them to stand, and I promised them that this was the best professional decision they will have made in their lives. And I mean it, and I believe that they'll, they'll come to realize that soon enough. So I thank you for this opportunity, and you can call him up.
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, would you come on up, and we can ask the town clerk, is she, yes, she is?
I, Seamus Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and general laws.
The Constitution and general laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Charter and Bylaws. The Charter and Bylaws.
The Charter and Bylaws.
Of the Town of Abington.
Of the Town of Abington.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Into the best of my ability.
Into the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office to which I have been appointed.
Of the office to which I have been appointed.
So congratulations.
There we go. Come on up.
You're a little bit of a party.
Yeah, sorry about that, that's my fault.
No, you're fine.
It's my first floor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Good evening, my name is Allison Sullivan Almeida, I'm the state representative for Abington, the 7th Plumette District. I just want to say, congratulations to you three. Like I said, and like the chief said, this is one of the best professions to be in. You know, I have a long list of family members who are in law enforcement or some way, shape, or form. My husband, who is a detective over in the city of Brockton. So from one loved one to you guys and your family, thank you for your service. Because without you guys, this new generation of law enforcement, we wouldn't feel safe. And so, like, I think one of you just came back, was it you that just came back? You know, stolen cars, people like maybe laugh about that, but you never know what you're running into when you, when you encounter someone like that. So to take the oath that you just did, that's probably the hardest part of your job, kidding, I'm totally kidding. But, you know, I think people underestimate, especially from a small town like Abington, they'll, they'll say to you, you won't encounter some of the things you'll encounter in the bigger cities, however you will. And, and you guys are going to be trained by some of the best in the department. You have some of the best members here supporting you and your journey. And your family is so proud of you. I think your grandmother and grandfather told me like a thousand times that you were graduating, and they couldn't stop smiling. And I know that you guys have some roots here, and that's important because you're serving commuting, community that loves you guys, but also that you love. So congratulations, I do have some citations here, I'm not going to read them all, I promise, with the, with the time. But on behalf of the entire membership, we want to congratulate you all and wish you the best of luck, and as always, stay safe and have each other's back. And you'll, you'll have the backs of many officers, but you'll also have the backs of us in the town, and we appreciate what you do. So thank you so much. Officer Fitz?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, apologize.
That's all right.
Officer Schmidt? Chief, I'm stealing your notes, sorry.
That's it.
And thank you, appreciate your time.
Very good, thank you, Representative Sullivan. Well, thanks very much, and congratulations to each of you.
Congratulations.
Welcome you on board, and, you know, we wish you the very best. Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 10th, 2025, at 6:05 PM in the Town Hall, 500 Melinowitz Way, for an increase in the number of cars on the Class II license from 15 to 26 for 810 Auto Motors LLC, 810 Brockton Avenue. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Yes, ma'am, please come up, identify yourself. For the record, your name and address, please.
My home address is business.
Business, yeah.
At 810 Brockton Ave., Nash Jocelyn. I am not one of the owners, but I did call, one had a family emergency, and the other one is very late. So they said I could, I'm the general manager there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
The application is before us to increase the cars, they have submitted their plot plan.
Yes.
And all the departments have opined on it. I see no question, I just want to make sure, just for the record.
Sure.
That you're asking for an increase from 15 to 26, but your hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, closed on Sunday. The number of cars on the property will be total of 33, if this is approved, 26, three for customer spaces, two for employee spaces, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Very good. Is there any questions from the members of the board?
I appreciate the beautiful plot plan.
Thank you, I didn't do it, I had to find him, finding him, but he did great, yes.
No, but I, you know, since I've been here, there's been some not as well-prepared, so I appreciate this.
He was wonderful, thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Very good, congratulations.
Anybody need these, they come to me to bring to you, you need those?
Yes, to the town manager, please.
And then the proof of the, do you need that as well?
Yes.
Okay. That was easier than I thought, thank you.
Very good.
Have a good day.
Listen up. Okay, next item on the agenda, discuss, discussion and possible vote on a policy for the implementation of trash fees in a phased four-year program, subject to town meeting discussion. I will turn it to the town manager.
So the plan that we have in front of everybody would have a five-year phasing for taking the $1.2 million that is currently budgeted for roadside pickup and putting it into an enterprise fund. The way it would work is a user fee would be set annually by this board, and quarterly bills would go out to each household to cover the cost of picking up the trash. So the phasing in of it would require, would include on year one that there'd be no charge to the households, so $1.2 million in free cash would be earmarked to use for this cost. And the reason behind that is because in 1991 and 2008, there were overrides specifically for trash, and we want to make sure that we, we recognize that and, and help people phase into this process. The year two of this would be 75% of it funded, again, by the town through free cash. The estimated cost to a household would be approximately $24 quarterly, $12 to seniors 70 and over. Year three, it would have a 50% funding by the town, year four, 25%. Essentially, by year five, when it was, it's fully implemented, there'd be a quarterly cost to your average household of $97, and your senior household of $48. The reason behind this, obviously, as we've been talking about, is because of the fact that there's been a 56% increase in the cost of waste hauling alone, just one part of our budget that we can no longer, we can no longer afford to let that take away from other services and operations. You know, we do understand that this is a big change, and we're trying to make it as simple and easy as possible, but in this current climate, we're doing everything we can to, to find a way to balance a budget without big reductions in services. We do intend to have an open forum on this on Saturday, March 29th, at 10:30, and on, excuse me, and on March 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at the Senior Center. The Saturday, March 29th, one will be at the library. And at that point, you know, we want everyone to come in who has questions, because we understand that this is, people want to understand why we have to do this, what this means, that, you know, ultimately, there is no change to your average household. I mean, it's going to be the same containers, it's going to be the same pickup day. Unfortunately, it's just that, much like other things that we provide for in the town, like water and sewer, there are just things that we have to charge for separately to be able to actually control the costs of these things.
And I think it's, it's worthy to know, one, this is something we've been discussing for a while, and clearly, there's a lot more discussion that will ensue specifically at town meeting, which will appear before the general budget is discussed. And this, just by way of history, over 30 years ago, the towns around us did what we are trying to do now. Abington had passed, after 17 years, an override just for trash. Ironically, 17 years later, they passed another override for trash, and this is the 17th year yet again. So we're in that phase where the, the cost for waste removal is far exceeding our ability to absorb it in the budget. With that said, we've taken into consideration the overrides that the town has appropriated in those ensuing times to try and phase it in over a period of time, but it's something that is not sustainable. If we were to keep it in the budget, we'd be looking at either A, an override, or B, doing cuts. And next year, in the next item on the agenda, we're going to be talking about the current year's budget process, but as well as FY '27. And I'm afraid FY '27 is going to be very difficult. And this is one thing that people complain a lot about, is that we don't plan. Well, here we are planning. We've said this, we brought together a group of officials to start planning to discuss this. This was the formulation of that, that discussion, where it will properly be placed before town meeting for the ultimate determination and decision. And if we move forward, you know, then we've, we've got it into a phased approach to wean everybody off of it, so we're not hitting everybody all at once, taking into consideration the amount of money that was, was appropriated from that standpoint. And people will say, well, you know, you, we give you enough tax money, what's our money going for? Well, again, hey, you know, it's very easy to say, but when you look at the budget, we have education, police, fire, we have a lot of, you know, intricacies. Our state aid has only gone up, this coming year, it'll only go up roughly 1.6%. So the state has had, not had the ability to supplement us where they've had in years past. So everything is coming down to a little funnel where we just, we just don't have the money. So we're trying to come up with innovative ways to deal with something that is not sustainable in the budget. As the town manager said, there's, there'll be a, a symposium on Wednesday, the 26th of March, and then on the 29th. So if you have your questions, feel free to come to those meetings. In addition, this cannot be enacted, you know, until we discuss it further at town meeting, of which will be, the question will be setting up an enterprise fund to do such, such that prior to the operating budget. So with that, is there any question from members of the board as it relates to the, the overall trash impact? But I think what we would need to do is to formally take a vote to endorse the phased-in approach in the idea from a policy standpoint that we're going to use $1.2 million in free cash for the first year, and then in increments over the five-year period, reduce it down, dedicate 75%, 50, 25, and then finally, zero. So first of all, is there any questions or discussion from the members of the board?
I think...
I just want to say that we've worked tirelessly, meeting as a group during the day, I can't tell you how many times, with the town manager, financial staff, to come up with the best resolution for this. None of us are comfortable doing it, but I think, I think we've done the, put together the best plan we can to phase it in, especially with, you know, the free cash, you know, covering it for the first year and bringing it in, and also having a discount for seniors 70 above, so.
And that was an important aspect, too, that clearly to recognize the senior population as well.
Absolutely. So let anybody else say what they have to say.
I think, you know, we could easily, as a town and as departments, we could have just said, you know, starting next year, it's 97 per quarter, and that's just what everyone else is doing around here, and deal with it. I think the fact that we're spreading it out and trying to ease the town back into this kind of system is huge, and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It, it is what it is, there's, you know, we're doing the best we can, like everyone has said before, so we'll get there.
Yeah, and, and again, as you said, that a lot of people did work on this. We had members of the finance committee, we had representatives from the health department, internal finance team, representatives from the Board of Selectmen, and we've been at it for quite some time, trying to find what the best solution is.
The school department.
The school department has been very involved in this, and, and actually, you know, and we rolled the, the plan out to the school committee, who again, realize the importance of this.
I'll make a motion to approve the, oh, sorry, sorry, pal.
One question. So is that, the pricing, is that one trash and one recycling barrel? What if the household has an extra trash barrel? Is that, are they going to get, have to pay?
No, they, that'll be the price per household. We probably will discontinue the second barrel program.
I think they've, I know that recycling the second barrel is not an option anymore already, so. I feel like trash, you have to prove quite a bit now even, so it's already kind of getting phased out.
Yeah, and I don't think there's all that many of them out there right now.
So if there's, if you're in a two-family and three-family, you would pay?
Three.
Per unit.
Correct.
Okay, so there was a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the discussion, excuse me, town manager report on the FY '26 budget process and discussion and possible vote on policy as it relates to the budget process.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can we just jump ahead? I see there's a couple of people here for the appointments, is there any way we can just jump to that?
I'm sure, I didn't realize, are they, oh, yeah, 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 okay.
I know, I know there's so many people on the call, you didn't know which ones were which.
No, not a problem.
You can still stick around.
We don't want you to change your mind before we get to it, so.
I didn't know that's why you were here. Okay, we'll bring forward item number five, request for appointment for the Conservation Commission. We have an application from Christopher O'Neill. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve, Mr. O'Neill, to the Conservation Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. We have an application from Michael Lavery, is it?
Lavery.
Lavery, for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Motion to approve, Michael Avery, for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. For the Commission on Disability, Amanda Langarant, perhaps?
Langarant. Langarant.
Langarant, okay.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. The next item is the DPW Fire Building Committee. This is an advisory committee to the town manager. The town manager is, is charged with the construction of the DPW and Fire Building Committee. Mr. Bezanson was on the committee, they brought, as I indicated previously, they're going out to bid, so the committee has brought that phase of the project to completion as far as the bidding goes. And now, with his resignation, it morphs into a different phase, so I will turn it over to the town manager from that standpoint.
Yeah, as you said, you know, as, as we're going to go into the building stage, there's going to be a lot of, um, financial questions, there're going to be a lot of issues that are going to come up. I think it's important that we have a full committee, and I think it's important that we have a representative of the Board of Selectmen on that committee. So I will leave it up to you to decide that, but I think it would be my preference to see one of you folks on that.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the chairman of our board to the DPW committee, because he's been at every meeting.
And they meet during the day, too.
Yeah, they do during the day. I think they started this me, this group quite a while ago, so, and he's been at all of them. He has experience in building municipal buildings, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I'll abstain. But thank you, yes, I will, so do.
Thank you.
Okay, back up to the town manager report on the budget process and discussion and possible vote on policy as it relates to the budget process. Mr. Limbys.
Right, so at this time, I think in front of you in your packets, I did submit the budget summary. We are, at this point, have a balanced budget. We have done so with the use of some one-time funds that we typically would not like to use, but we have a million seven plus with free cash. And we are recommending that $417,755 is transferred from the stabilization fund. And as much as we like to not touch the stabilization fund, that's what it is there for, is for some very difficult times and very difficult choices. We currently have approximately $3.8 million in that fund, so this would not be a large amount of it, and would still leave us with a comfortable amount. We typically want to see 5% of operating, so we would still be in that wheelhouse. But I think it is important this year that we, that we do get ourselves through. We've had, met with the departments, we've met with the school departments, we've, we have proposed a level service budget, we've made cuts in certain areas. There's a lot of areas that I think on the second sheet that came with the budget, or one of the sheets that came with it, is a budget tracking sheet that you'll see that many departments, like the police department and school department, they did have asks, things that they need, things that they, and they're not wants, they're just things that they felt are required to help provide, just the level service. But again, we, we backed those out. We are not looking to increase anything. Right now, we're at the mercy of some very difficult times, you know, between our insurance costs and our pension liabilities, and I think that's what the stabilization is ultimately there for, is to get us through these difficult times. So that's where we're at right now. I do agree with the chairman that we are going to have some very difficult questions going forward. We do have a group that has been meeting quite frequently regarding this year's budget and discussing, discussing the trash and waste management costs. I think it's probably important that that committee, or a form of that committee, that again, representatives from the town staff, but also this board and the finance committee and the school committee, that we're going to have to continue to meet shortly after town meeting or shortly after the summer, and start thinking about what we're going to do for the future, and how we're going to get through the next fiscal year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as I, honestly, and I thought we'd be facing this this year, and I think all you need to do is look around the towns around us. Duxbury's looking at a $5.8 million override, Hanson, $2.9 million, Norwell, $4.1 million, Hanover, $3.5 million, Whitman, $2.5 million. So we're all in the same boat. I mean, we, I think us and Situate are probably about the only ones around us that, that are probably going to escape this, this year, when quite frankly, I thought we would be in the same situation. But I think we've been able to, again, through planning, been able to cobble together this year's, well, effort. this this year, when quite frankly, I thought we would be in the same situation, but I think we've been able to, again, through planning, been able to cobble together this year's FY26's budget, starting July 1st, and safely get out of it for this year. But that doesn't abate the necessity for us to start planning for FY27, because again, I go back to, if we don't plan for it and we wait till all of a sudden, you know, the budget planning season a year from now, you know, people are going to, and the autumn drops out, you know, people are going to be saying, well, why didn't you plan on doing something? So I think it's incumbent upon us to look at everything. And in doing so, I had given to each selectman a study that was recently, well, not recently done, but several years ago, done by the Pioneer Institute. Those that aren't familiar, the Pioneer Institute is an independent think tank. They're not funded by universities, they're not funded by the government, they're, they're funded by donations, and they have the best and the brightest minds, and they wrote a white paper on outsourcing municipal services. I think we owe it to the people to begin to look at certain services. Now, that's not to say, and they say that even in, in the, in their studies, that not every service is, is it right to be outsourced, but there are certain mechanisms within a department that perhaps could be outsourced, that would save the community money. With that said, I'm going to make a motion that we direct, well, I'll get to it, but I'll explain the motion, direct the town manager to begin an investigation and study of the town hall departments, the departments, let's start at town hall, with the town hall departments under his charge, which would be in this building exclusive of the town clerk, she's elected, so her, she reports to the people, but of the town hall departments, that he look at this and do a top-to-bottom review to determine if it is possible to outsource any particular service that they provide, or the department itself, quite frankly, and see if it can be done in a cheaper and more streamlined fashion, and ask that him to report back after Labor Day at our first meeting in September with a plan going forward that we can begin the discussions. I think we owe it to the people to look at this and see, A, if it's feasible, and B, you know, what, what we could possibly do in that vein. Because if we don't, we're going to be up against it, and I think my mindset over the years has changed. Originally, it used to be, we would say, okay, we're all in it together, therefore we all have to share the burden of any cuts, and the demographics of the town has changed, society has changed, I no longer believe that to be true. I think we're going to have to be in a position to prioritize, in my own opinion, prioritize how we spend our money. And in my mind, that's fire, police, schools are right up the top, and after that, you know, we, we morph down to the elderly and so forth, but we have to be cognizant of the way society is changing, where the demographics of the town has changed too, and I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all anymore, and we have to be cognizant of that, and I say that upfront to begin the discussion on this process, knowing that we may have tough times coming up ahead. So with that said, I'll make the motion, and then we can have further discussions, that my, the chair on his own motion will move that the town manager is hereby directed to investigate, study, and report back to the Board of Selectmen at its first meeting in September of 2025 on a course of action for the possible restructuring and outsourcing of certain town services under the, under the direction of the town manager for the departments located at town hall. Is there a second for discussion purposes?
I will second it.
Motion made and discussion, seconded. Is there any further discussion on that? Again, this is beginning the process. This has nothing, we haven't formulated any decisions other than we are going to investigate it, which I think is our obligation. Any further discussion? If not?
Well, I'll say, I've kind of been banging the drum that we're going to be in rough financial shape going forward. I've been one of the people meeting during the day frequently to, to deal with the shortfall we had this year, but we were able to work out with everybody's help. I think people need to understand that tough financial times are coming, and we can't just keep running the taxes up. So we're doing, we're trying to think outside the box to do things now to deal with increasing revenue to help us in the future years, i.e. selling surplus property tax, clearing up the tax title property, doing all of those things. I think having this study done is imperative. The way municipal government has been run in all towns isn't going to work in the future. It's not feasible. We can, the taxes can only go so high. And the chairman and I were on the board 30 years ago, and things are completely different now as they were 30 years ago, and him and I talk about it on a daily basis. We need to think outside the box, we need to plan in advance, we've been trying to do that, and that's what's gotten us through this year, I believe, are going to get us through this budget, but we're not doing, we're doing a disservice to the townspeople by not saying what we think is going to be happening and not stepping forward and trying to, A, make you aware of what's coming and doing everything we can to try to deal with it as early as possible and as broad of, you know, broad sweep as possible. And so that's, you know, that's where I'm at.
I just think that the board should be proactive, looking, looking into the future. It is going to be a rough couple of years for all the towns, and you can see it in the environment. You can, you can look at any other towns, and I think it's important for us to show that we are being proactive, we are looking for every, start to say, nickel and dime to last this going forward, and we do have important decisions to make. So I do agree.
And stuff doesn't move quickly either, so we do have to start looking now, four, two, three, four years down the way. This isn't just a household where we're like, yeah, we probably should really work on the envelope system. It's not that easy to get this many people involved.
And I think that people are more, are looking at us, too, to find out what is going on in the town, what's going on in the, the rest of the commonwealth of Massachusetts, how are we going to handle things. Handling things 30 years ago exactly is very different than it is today.
And I think, if I can just jump in, one thing, we, we, as a board, I think I can speak for all of us in saying, we want to be as transparent as possible to everybody so they understand what's going on. So that's why the chairman wanted to bring this up as early as he's, he has, and we, we, we want the people to know, we're going to be very vocal and very public about this as it goes on, and I think we're really probably going to delve into it, if I can say, in the fall.
Yeah.
So everybody knows that right after Labor Day, we're going to be dealing with this, and-
And it's also a, we're going to have to look at and track the state revenues, too, to get a feel for what does, does it look like on the horizon for local aid, and that's one of the discussions Scott and I were having with Representative Sullivan Almeida prior to the meeting, was the state revenues, they still haven't got their handle on because they're still in flux. So that's going to be a problem for us as well, so we're going to have to see how the fiscal year ends with the state, and then how the first quarter of their fiscal year is looking, to kind of look into the crystal ball to see, okay, are we going to, what's local aid potentially going to look like for us? So it's not going to be an easy exercise, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, it's, it's going to be a long slog, I'm afraid, but better to start, you know, now and get it rolling, and then, so by the time it comes, we can have, we'll have looked at everything, and we're not running around in fire drill fashion trying to plug the dike when the water's coming, so. Okay, motion made and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, unanimous. All right, next item on the agenda, discussion and vote on the closing of the streets for the annual St. Patrick State Parade on this Sunday, March 16th, beginning at 1:00 PM. Chief Barney.
Hi, again. That's me. All right, so this is my first one of these. I'm really looking forward to it. Everybody's told me how incredible it is.
[laughing]
I, I will say, with what happened, the tragedy in New Orleans has got us on Central Street thinking about how to keep this environment safe, so we have stepped up our resources. There is an all-hands-on-deck order for our people. Every one of us will be working. We've also requested resources from the metro team, so we will have a drone team up above. We just actually deployed our trailer camera that we got on a grant that we, just a few weeks ago. It's up on the gas station at North Ave, over by Martins right now, so we'll have that in place that's already there. We will have two SWAT units in a gun car. Now, this is not like something that people will be seeing, this is truly just in case, it'll be on, on either end, but this is truly just in case something crazy happens. We want to be prepared. So nothing happens, you won't even see them. We'll have about 16 people from the mountain bike team, and we will have plainclothes BOSAR unit in, in and amongst the crowd, keeping an eye on the crowd. So not only should this be a terrific weather day from what I've seen, but it should be a very safe day. If, if I can, I'd ask the public to be mindful of the parade route. We do not want people setting up chairs on cross streets. Along the road, great. Crossing the road, we're going to have you move, so, you know, get out there early, get your chairs set up, but do not do it on the, on the street crossing roads because we'll just have you move. We had a meeting in this building Tuesday, Tuesday, with police, fire, we checked with Public Works before we got there, but they're going to help us out with trucks blocking roads and things like that. So the first road closure will be Washington Street at Route 18, that will happen at 11:45 a.m. Brockton Ave at Route 18 will be at 12:15, Abington Center 12:30, along with Central Street west of Park Ave. Central Street at Washington Street will be 12:45, as will Washington at Lincoln Boulevard, Washington at Adams, North Ave at Wales eastbound, Route 58 at Wales southbound, Route 58 at Monroe Street, and Route 58 at Adams Street, and then North Abington will close no later than 1:00. If the people at home weren't ready with a pen and paper, we will post all of this tomorrow.
Beautiful. I just got to ask you that.
Yeah.
Very good.
You know, some people are very diligent at home with their notebook. It's like keeping score at a baseball game. They keep score while what you say.
Motion to approve the police chief's plan for street closings for the St. Patrick State Parade?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, discussion and vote on issuing a cease and desist order for vehicle storage at the property at 201 North Quincy Street and set a date for the sale to be completed. As we all know, and I jumped over the minutes, but I'll go back to them, as we all know, we have an issue at 201 North Quincy based on the last couple of people that have been up before us that we've denied their licenses. It's a, I can't say the word I want to say, but it's a mess up there. And we've checked with town council. The recommendation is that we issue a cease and desist and give them a time certain to have it completed by. I met with the town manager and the building inspector, and we agreed that perhaps their recommendation is that the board consider giving them 30 days to clean up the property and remove all the junk cars. If they make an effort and they need additional time, authorize the building inspector to allow them an additional 15 days. If we give them the 30-day notice and nothing transpires, that at the end of 30 days, we authorize town council filing action in Superior Court. The, the last time we did have conversations with the owner, his position was that he was grandfathered under 40A, is it, which we disagree with, so I don't know how we're going to go, but I think it's, it's a formal step to be fair to them. We have to notice them, we'll give them notice that, you know, we'll have them served by a constable or deputy sheriff. Our police, well, police, too. Yeah, and, and that they will, give them the formal 30-day notice. If they show initiative and they need additional time, that we authorize the building inspector to give them an additional 15 days. Absent that, at the end of 30 days, that we go right to town council and ask them to file the necessary issues to begin the case in Superior Court. Any discussion or motion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the 30 days statutory, or can?
No, it can be.
All right, I want to make a motion we give them 21 days. So I just want to go on the record. I'm the one, when I get on the board, is to stop pushing the car count. So we have several license holders in town on various licenses that do exactly what they're supposed to do year in and year out. So I'm not going to sit here and keep giving people a pass when they know that they're in violation. We've been very upfront with them about getting it corrected, and they're not doing it, which is a draw on our resources of the building department, the police department, fire department, and everybody else that has to keep running up there and checking it. So as a courtesy, I'm going to make a motion that we give them 21 days, not 30.
Okay.
And if, and if not, then we take it to the next step, but I'm done screwing around with these people. The place up there, and I'm going to say it, is a shithole, and they are, they're just looking at us and telling us to screw by not doing what's been supposed to be done. This guy's owned that property for years, so this is for everybody else that does what they're supposed to do. So-
And isn't there an issue that nobody knows what cars are there?
They'll tell you that, but-
Who's, you know, that-
So I'll be honest, this, this has got to be hard.
They will all of a sudden know exactly whose car it is, and they have to get rid of them.
It's not, you know what, it's just, it's not fair.
All right, so is your-
I make a motion.
My motion is to give them 21 days and to shut them down if they're not done in 21 days.
And if they show initiative, do you want to get the building inspector?
No, shut them down in 21 days. We've had it.
21 days is more than enough.
This is what, the third time?
We have emails here from September 26th talking about they need to handle this, they've had hearings with us, they are well aware of what needs to be done, and they're refusing not to. Unfortunately, we've had to deny people that-
We're growling at this.
All right, let me, let me, let me state, let me state my-
I just don't think you get-
No, I totally agree.
I love small business, local, whatever, but like you said, they're not doing-
Yes.
-what needs to be done. They've been told more than once, they're pushing it off, pushing it off. It's really easy because we only talk about this once a month. We've literally talked about this property since I joined this board. That is insane in a small town. We've had to deny someone who probably had a really great business plan, but because he was picking the wrong property to do it on, we had to deny somebody who had an opportunity to build a new business because of how bad this is set up. So, yeah, same, like-
Wonderful. Well, and here, I thought I was the tough one. Geez, okay, then.
That amanda, she's out of control.
I'm being nice.
All right, a motion.
A motion.
So I want to say, I want to make the motion properly, so I want to make a motion that we give them 21 days-
Yep.
-to clean up the property and bring it into total compliance.
All right.
At that time, if it's not in total compliance after 21 days-
You will authorize town council to file action in, in court?
To pull their license. Should, well, what would the-
Well, if they don't have a license is the problem.
Well, to, what do we do?
Yeah, have a court order for them to clean it up.
Perfect.
Yep. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I hope not, but I think we've had enough. All those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. All righty then. The minutes.
Minutes, motion approved the minutes of February 10, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Item number seven, request for a one-day liquor license for the 10th District Brewing Company for the St. Patrick State Parade.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. We are going to, Mr. Cable Guy, we are going to go into executive session for a brief period. We will be back, so just put everybody on standby, but don't run away, okay?
I hope you beep that out. My daughter's watching.
All righty.
I said the yes word.
Pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21-3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining to wit the FSC Council 93, Abingdon Highway Park and Seward Department employees local 1700, and non-union personnel, the DPW director, is there a motion to-
Motion, motion to enter executive session to reconvene.
To reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call. Amanda.
Yes.
There we go.
She's been practicing.
Paul.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will reconvene, so hang tight. And I vote yes, we will reconvene, so hang tight.
Nancy, will you sign us some rooms?
No, we don't, we can meet right down front.
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
At five thirty, we can meet right down front.
Didn't have a room for us.
And, um...
Oh, no, Nancy.
And just, uh, after that, where we meet on the, at town meeting, the next meeting will be the twenty-eighth, which is the first Monday after the election, and that is the meeting, for all you Latin enthusiasts, it's se diva cantae, which means the chair is empty, which means we reorganize. So, um, at that point, um...
I become chair?
We will, yeah. Scott conducts the election for chairman and vice chairman, and we reorganize for the rest of the year. If, on the, just while you're doing that, before we adjourn, when we mark the town bounds, what preference would everybody like to start at? We can do eight, eight-thirty, nine, nine-thirty, what's your, I'm up at four, so we can do it at four if you want.
Five at five, whatever, is this time out?
Eight o'clock, sounds good to me.
Eight A.M.?
Sure.
Eight works, anyway, we can just get our, the rest of our side.
Where are we meeting first?
Whitman Line, right at Danica Drive on Washington Street.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Rosen.
Correct.
Will you boot us?
Aye.
Seriously.
Is Rosen gonna meet us there?
He is? He is.
All right.
So there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're adjourned at six fifty-five P.M. Good evening.